Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to Monday, October 9th, Malibu Regular City Council Meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Lamont.
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mullen.
Here.
Mayor Peake.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you kindly. Merrill, would you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Merrill. Kelsey, can I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 28th, 2017.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
It's me. I'm having technical difficulties.
All in favor?
Aye.
Give us one second.
Technical difficulties.
Low voltage. Alex, when he presses his mic, that's what's going on. Rick, for right now, we're going to share. All right. We have a couple ceremonial presentations, and is Robert Stark here? We already did that. All right. Robert, why don't you meet me at the podium, and then Susan.
All right, so this is a proclamation declaring October 15th through 21st, 2017 as Freedom from Workplace Bullying Week. Whereas the city of Malibu has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its citizens, employees, and employers. Whereas that well-being depends on the existence of a healthy, productive employees working in a safe and abuse-free work environments. Whereas research has documented that stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive work environments, where abusive work environments are costly for employers with the consequences including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, and injuries. And absenteeism, sorry, it was written twice. And protection from abusive work environment should apply to every worker and not be limited legally to protected class status beyond only race, color, gender, national origin, age, or disability. Now, therefore be it resolved that Malibu, the city of Malibu declares October 15th through 21st, 2017 as Freedom from Workplace Bullying Week and recommends and commends the California Healthy Workplace Advocates and Workplace Bullying Institute, which raises awareness on the impacts of solutions for workplace bullying in the United States and encourages all its citizens to recognize this special observance. Robert, if you have a couple words.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Healthy Workplace Advocates statewide, we'd like to thank your honor and council members for this resolution. It brings us one step closer to healthy workplace legislation, which we are working on. And we hope to make California workplaces from north to south, status-blind, discrimination and harassment-free. And one of the benefits of a healthy workplace is higher efficiency and higher productivity, and that means more profits for private industry and better budgets for institutions. We're making progress right now, and with your help and with this proclamation, we'll add that to the many others that we have, and we will work forward to healthy workplace legislation in the near future. Thank you very much.
Robert, thank you very much, and if you wouldn't mind, we're going to take a real brief photo. Next, we have a, I'd like to invite up Susan Duñez, our Public Safety Manager. And I want to start that off by saying, Susan, we're very grateful to have you in our city.
Thank you.
So, whereas major earthquakes pose a significant and ongoing threat to the city of Malibu and the entire region, whereas the city of Malibu has a responsibility to promote earthquake preparedness internally as well as to the public and plan appropriately for earthquake-related disasters. Whereas the protection of city employees will allow them to facilitate the continuity of government and assist the public following a major earthquake event. Whereas community resiliency to earthquakes and other disasters depends on the preparedness levels of all stakeholders in the community: individuals, families, schools, community organizations, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, businesses, and government. Whereas October 19th, 2017 is the day of the Great California Shakeout and International Shakeout Day, which the city of Malibu plans to participate in by joining
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to Monday, October 9th, Malibu Regular City Council Meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Lamont?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mullin?
Here.
Mayor Peake?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you kindly. Meryl, would you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Meryl. Kelsey, can I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 28th, 2017.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Give us one second. Technical difficulties. Low voltage. Alex, when he presses his mic, that's what's going on. Rick, for right now, we're going to share. All right. We have a couple ceremonial presentations, and is Robert Stark here? We already did that. All right. Robert, why don't you meet me at the podium, and then Susan? All right. So this is a proclamation declaring October 15th through 21st, 2017, as Freedom from Workplace Bullying Week. Whereas the city of Malibu has an interest in promoting the social and economic well-being of its citizens, employees, and employers, whereas that well-being depends on the existence of a healthy, productive employees working in a safe and abuse-free work environments. Whereas research has documented that stress-related health consequences for individuals caused by exposure to abusive work environments, where abusive work environments are costly for employers with the consequences including reduced productivity, absenteeism, turnover, and injuries, and absenteeism, sorry, it was written twice, and protection from abusive work environment should apply to every worker and not be limited legally to protected class status beyond only race, color, gender, national origin, age, or disability. Now, therefore be it resolved that Malibu, the city of Malibu declares October 15th through 21st, 2017 as Freedom from Workplace Bullying Week and recommends and commends the California Healthy Workplace Advocates and Workplace Bullying Institute, which raises awareness on the impacts of solutions for workplace bullying in the United States and encourages all its citizens to recognize this special observance. Robert, if you have a couple words.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Healthy Workplace Advocates statewide, we'd like to thank your honor and council members for this resolution. It brings us one step closer to healthy workplace legislation, which we are working on, and we hope to make California workplaces from north to south, status-blind, discrimination and harassment-free. And one of the benefits of a healthy workplace is higher efficiency and higher productivity, and that means more profits for private industry and better budgets for institutions. We're making progress right now, and with your help and with this proclamation, we'll add that to the many others that we have, and we will work forward to healthy workplace legislation in the near future. Thank you very much.
Robert, thank you very much. And if you wouldn't mind, we're going to take a real brief photo. Next, we have a, I'd like to invite up Susan Duane, who's our Public Safety Manager. And I want to start that off by saying, Susan, we're very grateful to have you in our city.
Thank you.
So, whereas major earthquakes pose a significant and ongoing threat to the city of Malibu and the entire region, whereas the city of Malibu has a responsibility to promote earthquake preparedness internally as well as to the public and plan appropriately for earthquake-related disasters, whereas the protection of city employees will allow them to facilitate the continuity of government and assist the public following a major earthquake event, whereas community resiliency to earthquakes and other disasters depends on the preparedness levels of all stakeholders in the community, individuals, families, schools, community organizations, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, businesses, and government. Whereas October 19th, 2017 is the day of the Great California Shakeout and an International Shakeout Day, which the city of Malibu plans to participate in by joining more than 8 million people in California and more than 10 million people worldwide in practicing duck, cover, and hold-on. Therefore be it resolved, the city of Malibu hereby declares October 19th, 2017 as Earthquake Preparedness Day and will participate in the Great California Shakeout for purposes of building a safer community and reducing the loss of lives and property from a major earthquake event by taking proactive steps today. Susan Duane is our Public Safety Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I really want to encourage everyone to participate in the Great Shakeout. You can either come to City Hall and join us in our evacuation drill, duck, cover, and hold. We'll have earthquake preparedness information here, and we'll have SOS Survival products if you want to come and get your earthquake supplies. We'll have the Chamber of Commerce here with business preparedness information. It's just, use it as a day to either, if you already have earthquake kit, refresh your kit. If you look around where you work and where you live, secure objects around you because the number-one way that people in our modern area around here, people die in earthquakes, is from the non-structural hazards, things falling on them. I'd always like to remind people that in the Napa earthquake, only one person died, and she died because a television fell on her head. So don't be that person that has something fall on them. So use this as your day to look around and make sure you secure anything that could be a danger to yourself or your loved ones.
Thank you very much, Susan. We're now at public comment. We'll start with Meryl May, followed by Lloyd Ahern, and followed by Michael Epstein.
Meryl May, good evening, council members and staff. I want to start by thanking the city staff and city manager Feldman and Public Works for being so responsive to requests when I submit them for things to get done. Following that would be imploring everybody, when they see issues, to either report it to the city or to Caltrans through an online service request order if they see safety issues on Pacific Coast Highway, because it's very effective. And obviously, I can't see everything, but you know I do like to write emails to you all about safety issues. But we have a lot of people out there that care, and if they know that there's a place on the city's website to submit requests directly to Caltrans, we have more people out there submitting safety issues back to them. Also, I want to remind everybody regarding fire safety. At the fire safety meeting you all held here at the town hall meeting, it seemed like there was a direct correlation between high winds and dangerous fires and conditions. It seemed like every other, and Rick, you probably know that every one of the past big fires had to do with high winds. So whenever there's high winds, I think people need to be really aware of that and prepare for fire conditions. That's about it. I just want to remind everybody to try to be proactive when they see things. I saw some water leaking out of the ground earlier today, and I reported it to somebody at the city. They're under, and it's under investigation. So anytime when people see things, if they report them, even if they think somebody else is going to do it, something worthwhile. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Meryl. Lloyd?
Good evening, council. I want to thank you guys from the September 11th council meeting. We never did formally thank you, the Parks people, about the EIR vote. And it was a combination of common sense and profiles and courage. And I just want to thank Laura, Lou, Rick, and Skylar. And then I want to reverse it around and say, thank you, Skylar, thank you, Rick, thank you, Lou, and thank you, Laura. Just want to make sure. And 10 years from now, you'll all be glad. Aunt Jefferson, when it comes through, I'm counting on your fifth vote. So thanks for you guys and for your very wise vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Lloyd. Mike, Lloyd, Lord. Thank you, Lloyd. Michael. And Michael, you're followed by Ryan.
Good evening. I'm Michael Epstein. I'm the overall producer for the Nautica Malibu Triathlon. And I just came to give you a quick update on our event that took place about three weeks ago on September 16th and 17th, and to thank you guys, and really to thank your staff because the event went really, really well this year. We worked together for probably the last two or three months leading up to it just to kind of do some better notifications to the residents. We ran some ads in the papers and really followed the direction of Riva and Jesse, and they're incredible to work with. I mean, I know you guys are proud to have such a great team out there, but you know, it was very effective. I know a lot of times you guys get personal notes that we don't always know about, but from our perspective, we got virtually zero complaints this year. And with that much impact, we should get a complaint or two. So I mean, it's just, we do our everything we can to minimize it. But I feel like kind of working together as a team with everybody really, really paid off well this year. So again, please, I know if you can, thank these guys because they're amazing to work with. We were able to raise $1.2 million for Children's Hospital. And in the last 10 years, we're over $12 million that we've raised for them. So some of these numbers, they just kind of run on, but we kind of take a step back. And I mean, that's like, we've raised, with the city, with the support of everybody, $12 million for pediatric cancer research to that event. So it's amazing. It's something I'm super, super proud of, and I really just came here to thank all you guys for your support over the years, you know, for the event and for, you know, working through challenges when we have them. Of course, the city, the Sheriff's Department, the Los Angeles County Life Guards. I mean, it's an amazing coming together of a lot of people that work really, really hard to make that weekend a success. And I thank you very, very much. And we couldn't finish the event without you, so I have finishers medals for all the city council members that I'll leave with staff. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, Michael. Ryan?
I'm here again regarding the skylights that are being installed on the wastewater treatment facility. And I heard the report from the city manager at the last meeting, which was after public comment, that said, well, that's what the city intended to put in all along. I reviewed the minutes for the meeting, which I'll bring up later under approval of minutes, but it was characterized as a question as to the roof. But it is that I made a complaint about the type of skylights that the city is in the process of installing on the buildings. And specifically, that they are these raised dome skylights, like a bubble dome, and there's at least eight of them or more. And they obviously will emit light or could emit light from the inside of the building out. And besides that, they just look stupid. So I was hoping that you can get that corrected, because whether it was originally designed that way or not, it's a problem. And I think the city can fix and eliminate the problem by just substituting the correct part, which is what I said before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. City manager update.
Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking our Community Services Department that organized the opening event for our Faces of Malibu art exhibit, which is here in City Hall. It was held on Friday evening, and we had a terrific turnout. So encourage everybody to walk through the upstairs area of City Hall and see all the great portraits that are up there. I also wanted to let everybody know that in light of the tragedy that happened in Las Vegas just a few days after we had our town hall meeting on mass violence incident response, we're going to do a very condensed version at the next city council meeting. Be about a 10-minute presentation that'll provide the community with some of the information for those people who weren't able to attend. So I wanted to let you know about that. And that we're also offering a crisis first aid class on Saturday, October 21st, here at City Hall. And there's information in the back about that, but we encourage people to sign up as the space is limited on that. And my only other update was about the Great Shakeout, and I think we've covered that. So thank you.
Thank you, Riva. Lou, would you like to start?
Sure. Do you want to address that skylight issue?
Sure. As I said at the last council meeting, they're actually not skylights. They're called light tubes, and what they are are a way of providing additional light during the day into an interior space. We have the same sort of feature in the upstairs conference room, the Surf Rider Conference Room. So it allows light to come in without having to turn lights on, so it's a very environmental-friendly way to light the interior. We don't anticipate that they will emit light out in the evening, but to make sure that that's not a problem, what we've done. I've asked staff to look at ways to have some sort of covering, like a drape or a blind that would cover those at night in the event that the space had to be accessed during the evening.
Thanks. And I want to thank the public speakers. Meryl, thank you for all the things that you do and all your emails. If you ever get on Meryl's email list, you'll never be lonely again. I can assure you of that. And we really appreciate all that effort. And Michael, thank you. I mean, I finished the Nautica Triathlon. Or at least I have the medal to prove it. That's, so thank you very much. As far as what I've been doing, Riva and I went to Pico Rivera to the launch reception for the California Choice Aggregation Project called PRIME that Pico Rivera is doing. They're doing it with the city of Lancaster, and their city manager was here a couple of weeks ago telling us about how they were working that out. And it's a way, it's a path that they took to get to more sustainable energy, and it's one of the ways for us to consider as well. Riva and I also attended a meeting together with the city of West Hollywood and Sheriff Jim McDonnell about the Liability Trust Fund, basically about the way it works, the way it should work, and the need to control these rising liability rates that are ultimately just unsustainable. And then after that, the following week, we met with Supervisor Sheila Kewell, the same people about the same issue, and she's going to work with us. And I attended with Laura and Riva the annual Fall Conference of the California Contract Cities Association in Lake Arrowhead. In addition to several interesting and informative panels, I managed to spend some time with Senator Ed Hernandez, who's the chairman of the Senate Health Committee, where our bill, SB 786, is headed. And he made a commitment to work with me on that, getting the bill out of committee. And also, he wants to work with me on the unlicensed, unregulated sober-living facilities that inundated California. So we're going to be working on that, and I'll keep you posted. And I attended, along with most of Malibu, the opening of the Faces of Malibu Art Exhibit upstairs. It was extremely well-attended. The place was literally jammed. And it was just interesting to go to an art exhibit where you had actually seen all the paintings before, and you actually knew the people that were in it, and to see them in, right in front of their own portraits. And I wanted to thank Alan Roderick Jones for curating it, and the Cultural Arts Commission, and Jesse Bobbin and his staff for putting it together so beautifully. And a huge thank you to Johannes Spinks, who did such an incredible work for the city of Malibu, and we're proud to have it hanging on the wall. And next week, I'm going to Alhambra for the L.A. Commission on Alcohol and Other Drugs, and that's what's happening with me.
Well, thank you, Lou. Jay?
Thank you, Skylar. Not much to report. I've been working in another community for the benefit of all the communities. For the last couple of weeks, I got back this morning at 6:00 a.m. Tomorrow, we do have a Zorasis meeting at 10:00 o'clock. Skylar and I will be there. It's on marijuana laws here in the city of Malibu. I hope some of you can attend and pitch in with your comments. I'm sorry to say that the San Salvador will not be coming this week. The captain of the San Salvador indicated that he was not happy anchoring his ship off a typical anchor and road for weight distribution. So it will come next year. We'll set up an anchor and a ball and a chain with a block for him. And we'll have the San Salvador next year for the Adamson House and for the city. And I want to thank Riva and the staff for putting out the effort that they did to encourage the ship to come here. It just technically didn't work for the captain, although we had four other 100-ton captains indicate that this is a common way of doing it. In fact, the John Paul Jones, which is 525 feet long, anchored here and had no problems. But we'll overcome that in the future. Thank all of you for your patience, and we'll see it next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Laura?
Good evening, everyone. I also attended the Lake Arrowhead, the Contract Cities Association event, which was really good and some good sessions, especially on public safety and about communication. And I always learn a lot from that. I also, this past weekend, went on a trip with our, one of our water retailers, West Basin Municipal Water District. And a group of us was taken, we were taken up to Hoover Dam, special tour of Hoover Dam underneath to really understand the whole history of it and the mechanics. Got to go in the tunnels and to see the generators. And then we also followed along the California Aqueduct and along the Colorado, I mean, the Colorado River Aqueduct, and went to Parker Dam, which is really where the water that goes to Southern California comes from Lake Havasu, which Parker Dam forms. And it was very informative. Malibu doesn't get our water from there. We get Delta water from the north. But, and it was, we were hosted also by Metropolitan Water District. And there were only two elected officials on this trip. So there are, you know, members of the community that go. So if anyone's ever interested, please let me know, and I can set you up with the proper people. And I encourage the rest of the council to go on this trip sometime. And they also do a trip of the, up on the Delta, which I'm going to try to go to next year because I won't be able to go to. And that's why I missed Friday night's opening of the Faces of Malibu. But I did want to thank Jo Spinks. I've known Jo for a long time, and I actually had the pleasure and privilege of being her first Face of Malibu, like two or three years ago at this point. It was a while ago, and I had seen her show up in Ventura. And the amount of hours and time and effort that she put in, not to be paid, not for anything, but really to give back to her community, and I just think that we owe her a lot for that. And the exhibit looks really great. And I also want to thank staff and our Cultural Arts Commission. I also had a meeting at SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, last week. And I actually have for Craig George some information about some of the money from the Volkswagen Zero Emission Investment Plan, that they're going to be giving out some grants. And maybe we can get some for our City Hall. Oh, you already, okay, you're already on it, so forget it. I won't give it to you. Well, thank you for already being on that, because I think that that would be interesting, to be able to use some of that money. If, for people remember, the Volkswagen lied about their emission standards and what they were doing. So they're paying a hefty sum, and 800 million goes to Calif, oh no, 200 million goes to California of the 800 million. And so a certain amount of that is going to different entities throughout the state. And then I just wanted to let you know, and so next week, I mean, this week, I'm also going to the meeting of the Joint Powers Insurance Authority, of which Malibu is a member. They're meeting up in Santa Barbara, so I'm going to be up there, and I'll report back on that, too. And then I wanted to remind everyone, on October 24th is our next Library Speaker Series, and it's Jeanette Walz, who wrote Glass Castle, which is a wonderful book if you haven't read it. And then it's also being made into a movie, and that will be here. And I imagine that will be a sell-out, so please call the library or go online and make your reservations, as all of our events, it is free. And that starts at 7:00. And then Riva talked about the first aid class, and I think, given what's going on in our country, that's really important to get up to date on first aid. And then, Michael, I want to thank you for another great event. But remember, just because you don't get complaints doesn't mean we don't get complaints. But I'll talk to you about that. And, but I get a lot more, I hear a lot more from the people in our community that participate, and what it means to them to participate, to be able to do it with their friends in the community. And so it, another A-plus job. Thank you. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Rick?
Oh, I just wanted to say that the RSVPs are sold out for our next Library Speaker Series, but you can get on a waiting list. And normally, we have around a quarter of the people that RSVP don't show up. So I encourage you to come and try to get in anyway.
Check, check. Okay, it's working. Comment on the bullying resolution? Comment on the bullying resolution in the workplace? That stuff's very important. If any of you saw or read the book, Lord of the Flies, you know, I always wondered what that was about, a bunch of kids on an island turning on each other. And then I realized, it's really about human nature. And, and sometimes it can be dark and ugly, whether it's in the adult workplace or in schools. And it's nice to see that people are actually spending some time and energy, especially in schools, to rectify that. You know, as in the service, kind of a rough-and-tumble organization, the Marines for 30 years, and they're actually fairly relatively professional about how they treat their team members these days, although there's a little bit of a wild pack of dogs down sometimes where they establish the pecking order. But they've gone to great lengths to change their culture, and it's very important. So, it's nice to see the city support that, especially, especially important with kids, you know, with social media. They have some powerful tools in their hands, and there's a number of cases where kids have committed suicide because of humiliating events via social media. The Cat That Changed America, encourage everyone to go see that. It's going to be a pepper nine on the 17th at the Smothers Theater at 6:30, about P-22, local mountain lion. Pretty cool. We have lions in our hills, you know? I've never actually seen one in my many years here, although I did see a bobcat the other day. I was cruising up Zuma Ridge Motorway in the patrol in my fire department job, and a little bobcat ran right out in front of us, and I thought that was pretty cool. So, I encourage you to go see The Cat That Changed America on the 17th at Smothers. Brush clearance, super important. I was coming this evening, listening to the radio, and it sounds like all hell is breaking loose in Orange County. And that situation is developing real-time, right now. And in Northern California, it might be even worse. My wife's cousins had to evacuate their home in Santa Rosa last night at 3:00 in the morning. They're now on a boat in a harbor, and they think it's a very good chance that their house didn't make it, and there's a lot of really rough things going on. The best thing you can do, really, is to prepare your home while it's nice and calm. I said that before, but it's very important. Big difference between 93 Fire here, where they lost 200 homes, and the 96 Fire, where they didn't lose that many homes, where they really instituted and got serious about the brush clearance program. So, this is the time to go about that. In fact, I spent the afternoon with my son, testing out our fire hose and our water pump and the hoses, and made sure they worked, and the pump had seized on us, so we took it apart, put it back together, and now it's working. So, all those things you want to do when it's calm outside, not when the embers are flying, are flying and the wind is blowing. And you're right, the big fires all do happen when the wind is blowing. It's because they spread really fast. You know, if the wind's not blowing, they can generally put it out. I'm glad to get a triathlon medal, and I'm glad the event went off really well. It's probably the only triathlon medal I will ever get in my life, so I appreciate that. The only casualty of that was my wife, who foolishly wandered down there to go to the store and got stuck in the trankus residential area for a while. But I think, you know, everything else, I never heard any complaints from anybody else. I did not go to the opening of the Faces of Malibu, and I did not go to the Hoover Dam, because I've been mending my posts with serious augmented staffing in the fire department for the last five days. And today, they have super augmented staffing here in Malibu, and they don't mess around anymore, just to let you guys know. They, fire department does not mess around about pulling the trigger and having extra people man their posts when there's any indication of wind going on. So, that's good. And that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. I attended the opening of the Wellness Center at the Boys and Girls Club, and just wanted to really, just, I guess, thank all of the city council members here, that they were very grateful for all the support that this city has given to the Boys and Girls Club. And I think that the resource that's going to be provided up there with counseling services for the youth in our community is something that's really vital. And I'm really glad to see that, that our city and that the other, other people in the community have continued to support the Boys and Girls Club. Today, I attended the surf contest with Surf Rider. That was a really very well-done event. I wanted to say congratulations to my friend Taylor, who won the contest. And tomorrow morning, as Jefferson says, at 10:00 AM, we do have a Zorasis meeting here at City Hall that's, kind of deals with the marijuana resale and those kind, different kind of issues, as the laws have changed in our state. So, I would encourage anyone that's concerned about that or wants to know what's going on to come and give us their input tomorrow morning. And we're going to go ahead and move on through this. May I please, did anyone want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Have item 3B3 pulled? All right, so can I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, pulling item 3B3?
Aye, so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go ahead, and, item 3B3 is the minutes. And Ryan, did you want to speak to that? I know that you kind of referenced it in your previous comment.
Yeah.
If you want, also, if you could just reference the page that you're referring to?
Yeah, toward the top of page four. If you recall, my statements were related to the light transmission out of skylights. The minutes say that I questioned the design of the roof. So, those words, questioned the design of the roof, should probably be substituted with complained about the raised dome skylights.
So, the raised dome light tubes, for clarification, or do you want to call them skylights?
I think they're skylights in every country.
Okay, we'll go ahead with skylights. That's fine with me. Does anyone have any objection to changing that in the record? No? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve item 3B3 with a reference change that Ryan Embry questioned. He stated that he was opposed to the design of the skylights on the roof of the wastewater treatment facility.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now, act 4A is the ordinance banning self-regenerating water softeners. Craig?
Council. Tonight, for your consideration, this ordinance, 424, we have the first reading of the ordinance. One of the things that staff looked at today was, based on some comments and a letter that was submitted to council, we've decided, or staff has decided, that we would like to remove references to self-regenerating water softeners, other than in the Civic Center prohibition area for connection to the wastewater treatment facility. We'll do some further outreach and work with the community and the people that were concerned about that, and may come back later to council with an ordinance. But right now, it'll just be for the Civic Center area in connection to the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility. So, a brief staff report, just to talk about what that really means. So, what is the importance of self-regenerating water softeners? What they really are doing is using salt to, and if you've ever used one or been associated with one, you know that you're always dumping 40-pound bags of salt into that, and they seem to just disappear. It's due to the back flushing of the water softener into whatever that happens to be. So, our concern would be connection to the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility and the sewer, and the TDS, total dissolved solids, and this associated salinity that would be delivered to the plant, and what the effects of that. Now, why should we be concerned with that? There's a variety of reasons. There we go. There's a number of things that the city has adopted previously. First, we have the Malibu Valley Groundwater Basin, which is basically the entire Civic Center area. It's bounded by the mountains to the east, the west, the north, and the Pacific Ocean on the south. We have agreed, and we have written a management plan that we have agreed to manage, that plan is, and protect the Malibu Valley Groundwater Basin. It's a potential drinking water source. It's not an absolute drinking water source, but in the future, if there's additional droughts or whatever, and that source of water needs to be preserved, part of this ordinance is to assist in preserving that, so that there isn't salinity and TDS impacts to that water body. Also, the city has adopted, in relation to the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility, a salt nutrient management plan that was brought previously before council, and the regional board has also adopted that. So, that is in place, limiting what we can do in the Malibu Valley Groundwater Basin as far as salts and nutrients, or salinity and nutrients. Then, in relation to the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility, the city's already been issued a WDR by the regional board, which is a waste discharge report, and it limits the amount of TDS and sets what those limits are. There are established numerical limits. If there were exceedances on the plant, that we could case potential fines or disruption of the plant and operation of it. So, one of the sources that we can control, the TDS and salinity, is by removing self-generating water softeners, or self-regenerating water softeners, from delivering the salt and brine solution to the plant. Also, the, this plant will be producing Title 22 recycled water, and in that, we also have a recycled water permit that also limits the amount of TDS and the, and what can be in there, and the salinity of the water, because if it comes too high, it's no longer usable. So, it's standard set by the state and limited, so we don't, we want to assure that we're not exceeding those limits. And again, one way to easily do that is to prohibit the use of the self-generating water softeners in the Civic Center area. Originally, we were talking about also banning them for the rest of the city on onsite wastewater treatment systems, and that's what we are going to eliminate at the present time. So, that won't be for the consideration tonight. One of the things also is that, what else are we taking away the right of somebody to have soft water? And no, we're not. We're taking away one option to obtain that, and that is in the self-regenerating water softeners. There are exchange tanks, salt-free water softener service, and different providers come out and they exchange the tanks on a regular basis. There are newer types of devices that are out there, such as magnetic water softener, reserve, reverse osmosis, and electric water softeners that also remove the hardness. The hardness is just really, it's not a health defect, or it doesn't cause any health issues. It's really more of like, it's easier for cleaning dishes and glass and things, and for your laundry, and for, and if you have a water softener at home, obviously, it feels a lot better on your skin and other parts when you have those. So, it's, it's not removing the ability to have it, it's just limiting these sources of salinity and TDS to go into the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility. So, I know in, in the first reading, we've added a couple of things on the ordinance, and Chris Deacon spoke to those, what those changes will be that we're suggesting for this evening.
Thank you, Craig. Did you want to go now? We have a couple of public speakers. Okay, so, we're going to start with Chris Layton, followed by Michael Omari, followed by Ryan Embry, then Norm Haney. Good evening, Chris.
Mayor P., council members, Ms. Feldman, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this very, very important issue for the industry that I represent, which is the Pacific Water Quality Association and the Water Quality Association International. We, it's kind of interesting, if you, if you look back, a number of years ago, Senate Bill 2148 addressed the fact, when water softeners were being characterized as being sodium or salt dumper, that passed through the legislature that the people of California had the right to choose how to improve the quality of their water. And that law, that law ran for, for better than, than 20 years, when, for sometimes good reason, other times just low-hanging fruit reasons, water softeners came under attack. The net result of it was that about 11 years ago, another Senate bill was put into place that laid out very specific, very specific things that were necessary to do before any municipality, city, sewage agency, would ban, would ban them. Now, included in that, as it relates to right now here in Malibu, would be that you post, you post what it's going to do, you inform, you inform your, your constituents that they know what you're going to do. I look up here and I see exchange tanks, salt-free water softeners. Well, they, they are exchange tanks, but they're not salt-free. The regeneration just takes place somewhere else. But they very definitely, I promise you, are not salt-free. Magnetic water softeners, if you go to, if you go to ANSI, NSF, IATMOS standards, there is no, there is nothing that says that a magnetic device softens water. They're not water softeners. The same thing would be true of electric. There, there just isn't, it doesn't exist. Reverse osmosis, most of you would probably be familiar with, is a drinking water product. While you could, you could utilize it for an entire house, it isn't really practical. But let's go back to the exchange tank, which does have salt. Well, that's an option, and it's true. You live in a, in a wonderful, wonderful area. The cost of having an exchange tank is probably in the neighborhood of four to eight times what would be if you made a capital expenditure and had an automatic softener you added salt to. Is that important to you? It may be, it may be, to your ultimate constituents.
We've got 20 more seconds.
Okay. I urge you to work with the Water Quality Association, Pacific Water. We will help you determine if the path that you're going on is the correct one. We won't try and throw anything in front, front of you to stumble on, but we, we can help you do it correctly. If you aren't doing it correctly, we'll be more than happy to point that out to you and your constituents as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Michael, followed by Ryan, followed by Norm, followed by Merrill.
Mayor, council members, good evening. George, and I'm, actually, I'm forgetting to say here, the city council and city managers, it's good to see you all. I wasn't intending to be here tonight, except that it was brought to my attention about 3:30 afternoon, the title of the ordinance, self-regenerating softeners. And I wanted to, came to caution the city and to urge you to change the title from, and delete self-regenerating, and just call it what it is, additives of salts and chemicals. That's what they are. When you say self-regeneration, then you are intruding and you are basically limiting the science frontiers. Innovative science today look for organic self-rejuvenating mechanism that add no salts and no chemicals to the process. In fact, we got one today, that is, right now, it looks like outside of reverse osmosis is organic, totally natural laws of, of iron exchange and bonding, absorption of TDS, electrical conductivity, and killing of bacteria. All organic, but also is a self-rejuvenating, self-rejuvenating, self-regenerating mechanism through photosynthesis and through biological living enzymes, and also biological living bacteria, which devours and consumes the pollutants in water. So, you need to change this self-rejuvenating. It's not a self-rejuvenating, it's an additive. You add, add, it doesn't work on its own. It, it only works by adding salts to the water, sometimes chemicals to the water, like noradic acids that people who own swimming pools use to their, to balance pH levels in the swimming water. Also, noradic acids can be used for your landscaper and/or mason cleaning up your, the mold on the driveways. So, that's what we're here for. Please take notice of it, and I'm sorry, Craig, you're doing a great job, as usual. And if I'd known about this, I would have brought it to your attention, and I'm sure you would have looked into it and perhaps realized the importance of calling what you're prohibiting what it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan, followed by Norm.
Within the last eight months, you passed an ordinance that regulated what can be discharged into the sewer network that you are building within the district, Phase 1 or whatever it expands to. it expands to become. That's already done. This seems to be the dirty work of the state water board, that somebody's got the ear at the city, that they want you to now start regulating the quality of discharges in water into the groundwater basin and the Civic Center. That's not your job. The state exclusively has that right and authority to regulate groundwater discharges and issue permits for that. This is a, well, maybe there could be an increase of salts, but currently, what's built is built, and the residents and the people of Malibu are using whatever is happening, and there's no groundwater study which established a baseline for this. There's no way of tracking it. You're just asked to take a leap of faith and say, this is a good thing, we should do it. I don't think the state has established a need, or proof, or a baseline, or any track or study as to why this regulation should be imposed, or how to prove that it's even working, or if it should be more than a three-year test program. The basin is already, should be reclassified as Civic Center Basin's water should be declassified from drinking water, because we were already told back in 2009, it was too salty for drinking water anyway. And we know that from people who have wells in Serra and other places, and you attacked the wells in a separate ordinance, making it very onerous for anyone to put in a new well. They would have to do so many studies, it would be economically infeasible to establish a new well. So, maybe the new cemetery won't suck the water out that you're putting down in and use it to water the lawn. But, so you've achieved that, but both of those, and this thing proposed tonight, are really the domain of the state water board, and you're being snookered into doing their dirty work for them, and I would suggest that you're not.
Thank you, Ryan and Norm. And Norm, you're followed by Merrill.
Good evening, council members, and Chair Peake. Norm Haney and I, Chair of the Wastewater Advisory Committee for the City of Malibu, and the original ordinance came before us to discuss. And unlike some citizens of Malibu, I do think that the City of Malibu does have a responsibility to do whatever it can to prevent pollution of the groundwater. This is not the first time that the City of Malibu has taken the bull by the horns and decided to upgrade things to eliminate pollution in our community. And I appreciate that Ryan believes that it's the state's responsibility. However, I believe, and the Wastewater Advisory Committee believes, that it's everyone's responsibility to try and clear up pollution. So, we unanimously supported the original ordinance that is not before you tonight, and we applaud our Public Works Department, our Health Department, and our Building and Safety Department for bringing this before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm and Merrill.
So, Craig, I don't know the answer to this, so that's why I'm going to ask the question. You know, in the past, I've tried to be proactive about coming up with a simple suggestion list for how the people can help maintain their septic systems and make them operate more efficiently. Good things, bad things. So, in a septic system, if you put all this salt into a septic system with all these 40-pound bags going in there, does it adversely affect the bacteria? And then, could it also affect the perkability of the pits and the system? So, that's a question that people may want to know, so that if they have these systems, they could transition away from them, from their septic systems, if it is a negative.
Craig, do you want to answer that?
Sure. Merrill, we did do some research on that. There's a lot of discussion in the area, both pro and con, as to the effects on onsite wastewater treatment system. I think staff believes that there is some deleterious effects by having that much salt into it, and then eventually, the salt will enter into the soil regime for the dispersal, and it has impacts on the soil. Again, it's one of those areas or topics where there's a lot of discussion back and forth, but since we're not proposing to do that, we could certainly post on our environmental health website some information about that, and the public wants to read that and make their own decision. We can certainly do that.
All right, Christie, did you have anything to clarify in the ordinance?
If the council's interested in introducing an ordinance that just regulates in the Civic Center, I have the changes for you. So, we know when you're ready. I stand by.
Right, you guys, who would like to start?
I just have a question. If, I think your amendment, your change to limit it to the Civic Center makes a lot of sense, obviously. Do you know if there are any self-generating water softeners in the area around Civic Center?
We're not, staff's not aware of any. Probably the biggest potential where there could be would be in the two cleaners that do laundry. I don't know, it's something we'd have to investigate. If we have an ordinance, if we pass the ordinance that requires prior to connection, then we would do an inspection of those facilities soon, and then notify those property owners of that. But I think, so far in Phase 1, it's all commercial, except for the Tow Yard and Crummer property that are still to come online, there really wouldn't be any need for water softeners, but we would have to investigate that to see if there are, but we're not aware of any at the current time.
So, we're making a law that we don't really need?
Well, there's going to be a lot of, there'll be a lot of future development. I mean, in the Civic Center, it's not a law that we don't need, it's a law, I believe, or the staff believes, that we do need, because there could, there is a potential that there's some out there. We just didn't go door-to-door to knock and ask if people have water softeners. I mean, I agree that it was a little bit onerous and probably unnecessary to reach out to the rest of the community in that regards, but as far as the wastewater Civic, the Civic Center, like I say, we have affluent limits and recycled water limits that we have to ensure that we don't exceed, or there could be fines or lack of ability to distribute the recycled water, and I think this is one of the very easy points to do, to minimize the amount of salinity and TDS that goes into the wastewater system.
All right, one more question. We got a letter, I guess everybody did, about this law that I think that gentleman was discussing, about having to reimburse the property owners if you make their system illegal. Do you know anything about that?
Yes, I did reach out to Carrie, I forget her last name. Today, we did speak about that. I told her what we were going to do, and she supported the changes, the amendment. We will reach out, both to the gentleman that was speaking here, and to her and her organization, if we decide to go forward with any additional bans. What they're talking about is for residential, so if a residence has a self-regenerating water softener, a lot of jurisdictions in the state is kind of saying, then you should make some kind of a program to reimburse for the cost of that. Most of what I've seen in investigating that have been jurisdictions that are offering $100, $150 rebate program to get rid of your self-regenerating water softener. I don't know how effective those programs would be, but they are out there. But it was mostly in regards to reimbursements, and that's, again, one of the reasons we pulled the other part of the amendment, or the ordinance for this evening.
May I jump in? Also, we've put in the ordinance a amortization period. We don't know of any, we don't need it right away, we're building still, so there's a year to amortize it out. That should take care of it. But also, let me, I should have mentioned this earlier, but to another speaker, while self-generating water softener is the term that we used, it isn't intended to have any effect on innovation, because we've specifically defined it, it's in your packet, but it specifically references conditioning appliances that discharge brine into the sewer system. And so, and then it goes on to actually specifically exclude those self-generating water softeners that do not include salt and the like. So, while maybe in imprecise term, it is precisely defined.
Okay, thanks.
We used to use a system like this when I lived in Chicago, because at the particular place I lived, it had water that was a problem. And how prevalent is the use of these systems here, or do we even know?
In my experience, I don't see very many, I've seen very few of those. That doesn't mean, I mean, if we're building a new house and we're going out and inspecting the plumbing system, I'm not aware of many that go in. I'm sure there are some, but I don't know the exact numbers. We've never done a survey or anything to say how many are out there, but, you know, the water in Malibu is not considered that hard, and as I said earlier, it's more of an aesthetic thing for taste and for, just for the purposes of using the water. It doesn't, there's no health risk to drinking hard water, so it's just for the aesthetics of it.
Okay. I would think that, and I think one of these letters addressed that, for people who are not on municipal water, which we have like world-class municipal water here, that it might be an issue. You know, I don't know, because there may be a lot more stuff, but it sounds like the changes you made accommodate those people who are on wells, so that's good. And that's the only thing I had. Thank you.
Jay?
Thank you, Skylar. Real quick, I've noticed that there are a couple of those systems in some restaurants. So, is that something that we can look forward to dealing with in the future as we draft this? Because in the restaurant industry, they're the toughest on the septic systems, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they quite often have high standards for cleaning of the implements and utensils that they use in their restaurants. So, oftentimes, they will have these systems in the restaurants. So, we may be addressing that in the future, and then I was just curious if Sam Unger was made aware that we're doing this kind of thing, because I think it would be great to include him in the information, or regional, or state, whichever it is, because it looks like an advancement to me for the groundwater quality.
I did reach out to the Regional Board, and I didn't talk directly with Sam, but I did talk with his staff, and they were very supportive of the, especially in the Malibu Valley groundwater basin and the protection and regulation to the Salt Nutrient Management Plan that we have in place, and also for the groundwater management plan that we have in that area. So, they were aware of it, they were supportive, and like I said, it wasn't Sam directly.
Right. Just somebody there at that jurisdiction, so we might have to address some of the restaurants in the near future as well.
They are included in this. They are currently included in this ordinance, so it will apply to restaurants as well in the Civic Center area.
I've only noticed a couple of them that have those systems.
Laura?
So, you know, I guess the unique experience of working a lot of different homes in the city and coming across a lot of these systems, far more, I guess, than sometimes I would think. You know, not every house, but I would say that many houses do have them, and they have the large tanks on the outside of the house that do, I believe some of those get exchanged. I don't know, you know, they do add, I've been to houses, and they have a forklift that comes and unloads salt, and they maybe do it once a year or something. I would also be concerned if, you know, even some of the rehab properties were using them and whatnot. So, what, it sounds like if it's something that's going to make that better, then it's something that we should do, but I'm, the only thing that I sort of see as an issue is not having the baseline of what the water quality is to see how it's going to change. Or like in, for example, the discharge, when the wastewater system comes online, if a property is discharging that into the system, how are you going to know? How are you going to track that back? How are you going to track whatever those chemicals or hazardous stuff back to that property? Is each property going to be monitored for discharge, or is it only going to be monitored for volume, and then you would be able to know, you know, it's one of these 20 properties that it came from? I was just curious to know how that would work, because, you know, if we pass this right now, I don't think that everyone that's in the city is just going to go out and get rid of their water softeners overnight, and it would be more that, how are you going to then, you know, remove those systems in that area?
Okay, well, that's, again, that's part of the reason why we amended the ordinance, just to include the Civic Center area. In the Civic Center area, we have a number of studies that are currently under progress, groundwater monitoring studies that are measuring chemistry in the water on a number of occasions, both for the MOU and for the background. So, we are testing for salinity, and we are testing for TDS on a quarterly basis, it's approximately, we have 50 wells in the Civic Center area. So, we are monitoring, we will have background data, we'll be able to see, once the plant comes online, if there are substantial changes, not only to the salinity and TDS, but also the bacteria and other things, and nitrogen, that are all part of our MOU program. When a facility connects, when a commercial facility connects to the Civic Center wastewater treatment plant, part of the requirements that was in the ordinance that we did adopt will require them to have a sampling port, so we will be able, it won't be a constantly monitoring port, but if there was suspicion that TDS or salinity or something was coming from a particular commercial property, we would have the ability to test that and identify that building.
So, essentially, if somebody dumped a hazardous chemical into their waste system, you wouldn't be able to get that till it got up to the plant, and then you would not know specifically what property it came from?
I think that's true, and that's probably true with any wastewater plant.
Okay. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I just wanted to thank you for having those ports for inspections on these larger facilities that'll be contributing. I think that's a great idea, and I'm glad to hear that.
Ryan, did I miss you?
Mayor Peake, I want to rise to point of information, is that you're amending the ordinance proposed for tonight to be a subset of an original area defined as the entire city, and now you're referring to it as the Civic Center area. And I, resident of the Civic Center area, I'm not exactly clear what you mean, because there's the state identified boundaries, which were very specific, and that included areas on both sides of Malibu Creek and the Civic Center, which frankly, does not include Winter Canyon. We know that from the state's own studies, that they said less than 1% of whatever is discharged in Winter Canyon might make it back to the lagoon, and that was an estimate. And the subsequent studies and everything else, the USGS and your own stone, all these other people you've hired have pretty much disproved that. So, is there a map or something that can, I'd like to know if I'm in it? And right now, I have no idea what you're doing. I'm sorry, it's not sufficient to go by tonight.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I think that'll, it'll help clear it up. Also, you don't have to take points of order from people who aren't on the body. Okay. So, if you look at page 2 of 4 of your ordinance, draft ordinance number 424, I'm going to give you three changes that are going to convert the ordinance from being one of general applicability to one of just being related to the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility. In section 9.40020, we're going to delete generally end from the title. So, the title of that section will be self-generating water softeners prohibited in connection with the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility. We're going to delete subsection C entirely, and subsection A, we're going to amend to add words at the end, so that it reads, "No person shall install or in any manner assist in the installation of, maintain, or use a self-generating, regenerating water softener in the area served by or from properties connected to the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility." B stays the way it is. And then, those are the three changes, and now I'll read the ordinance as amended, would be, the motion is to introduce on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Malibu determining the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and amending chapter 9.40 of Title IX of the Malibu Municipal Code prohibiting the installation or use of self-regenerating water softeners from properties connected to the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility, and amending section 1.10040 of chapter 1.10 of Title I of the Malibu Municipal Code to reflect that violations of chapter 9.40 shall be subject to the city's administrative penalties provisions.
I followed it.
Did you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion with the, especially with 9.40.020C, because that's important. Thank you. That's what I said, with the deletion.
You're just referencing that. So, you're making the motion as amended, as Christie said. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. All right, we're now at item 4B, which is going to be continued to the October 23rd City Council meeting. For, yeah, correct. And that brings us to 5A, which is the FEMA preliminary floodplain maps, and I believe we have some more information on that from our public works staff.
Good evening, Mayor Peake and distinguished members of the Malibu City Council. Item before you is basically an update from last meeting, council meeting on the 25th regarding the FEMA floodplain maps, and with that said, Rob DeBeau, Assistant Public Works Director, is going to provide you with the update. Go ahead, Rob. is going to provide you with the update. Go ahead, Rob.
So good evening, Mayor and council members. At the last meeting, I gave a short presentation on the revisions to the FEMA floodplain maps along our coastline. And during that meeting, there was a bunch of questions, and I'd like to kind of address some of those questions. And first one was, have FEMA representative here at council meeting to ask questions. I did get in contact with a lot of FEMA representatives, and unfortunately, they're all in Florida and Houston and Puerto Rico, working on all the devastation they had out there, and working a lot of with the community members and trying to get those properties back on, you know, back up and running. And so they wish that they could be here tonight, but they, but obviously, they're a little busy. They did mention to me that if there's any questions that come up, I can be a conduit and send those over to them, and they'll provide a response. So they have that. The next question that came up was about the flood maps. And I have some slides of about three different areas of the maps. I want to kind of go over the differences on the 2008, the current 2008 FEMA map and the preliminary flood maps, which are anticipated to be adopted in August of 2018. So the first one is on PCH, right by Ramblavista. The upper, the upper left is the 2008 FEMA flood maps, and the bottom right is the preliminary FEMA flood maps. Here, the, you can see the elevation, I believe it's elevation 14, and that's the base flood elevation for that area. And this area here is pointing to, if you can see it, to where the flood boundary goes up to PCH. The reason I selected this area here, there has been questions on if the new flood boundaries go on PCH and cause damage to PCH. This is the most severe case that I've found along the coastline. And so the first one here is the existing one. The, so the bottom, the bottom right is the proposed changes, and that's elevation 19. It gets, so it gets raised up to 19 in this area. And you can see at the new mark, the flood boundary goes out into PCH, but it's covering the far right lane, and it does block that lane, but the others, but there is other lanes going. And so this was the worst case that I found on PCH as it affected the roadway. The next one here is at the Malibu Lagoon. And here, at the Malibu Lagoon, and it shows a base flood elevation of 13. I don't know, can you see the elevations on there? Okay. I'm going to do my best to kind of walk you through it. The base flood elevation goes all the way to, it goes all the way to the colony, and it shows the elevation, their flood elevation of 13. It also shows a base flood elevation over there by the pier, and I believe that is 14. So it's 14 over there. So by the pier, it's elevation 14. For the revised map at this location, right by where it comes, the creek enters in the ocean right there, that elevation goes up to 19. And you can see that, that area does extend out to Colony, and it raises up to 19 in that area. What's interesting, in that same area right by the pier, that elevation goes down to a 13. So it does lower in that area. So you can see some areas it does increase, and some other areas it decreases. And that's a phenomenon that I was, that I've seen throughout the whole coastline. The last one that I want to mention is on Malibu Road. This one here, we have a flood, base flood elevation of 17, and now this area got revised to an elevation of 31. So that's quite, that's quite a difference in there. Just to the east of that section, it is, it's elevation 17. And then just adjacent to this is elevation 16. So you can see, elevation, it's increased in one area, but it's decreasing the other, but there's substantial-
Can I ask you a question? Is there anywhere, I mean, the change from, what was it, 17 to 31 is pretty high. Is there anyone where it goes from 31 to 17?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just wanted to clarify that.
I think the, I think the highest that I've seen with, with the current map is around 20, 21, around that elevation. So, and in those ones, it changed a little bit. It went up a little bit and down. It just depends on the location. Here, you see a lot of differences here. You have 31, and then you have 16 on the other side. I did talk to FEMA about this situation, and there is some comments that we could, we could supply to FEMA to put in some transition zones to make that not a drastic increase from 16 to 31. So there is those options. We can do that.
So real quick for reference, if I may, we're talking about between Old Joe's and Second Point, and then to probably the houses in the Colony in the 70s, that there's a 15 to 20-foot difference on the same piece of beach. That's only, the only physical difference is Old Joe's rock pile. Other than that, they're all at the same level. But on the maps, we're indicating a 15 to 20-foot difference. Am I correct?
It's, well, I mean, I'll get into that a little bit, and I'll get into some of the things that we're doing to analyze that and get back to you. And I'll discuss that in a second here. But like I mentioned, we can, we can go ahead and put those comments into FEMA to try to get that resolved. Another thing that the staff has done is entered a contract with Moffett and Nichols. They're going to analyze the data, and the analysis that FEMA did to come up with these base flood elevations and these changes within the flood zone. They currently did this same analysis in Ventura, and we're fortunate that they're able to do the same analysis with us. We have Aaron Holloway from Moffett and Nichols here today to kind of, if you have any additional questions, he'll be here to answer those questions to you. As in the technical reasons why, there could be a number of reasons why that elevation is different throughout, but that's part of the analysis that we're going to go through. A lot of the assumptions and data that FEMA put together will come to a conclusion on what, why they come up with that elevation. So during that process, that's, we'll figure that out. Yeah. Next, staff recommends that council adopt Resolution Number 1744. This resolution is a notice that we intend to give out to applicants who are in the process of doing new developments within the coastline here. The notice will state that the projects will be evaluated based on the new FEMA preliminary floodplain maps. And that's to, like I mentioned the last time, that's to make sure that when these projects are completed, they're able to obtain and obtain insurance and not have any problems with insurance that way. The notice will also provide a mechanism for applicants and owners to provide proof that they're in the process of appealing the floodplain and flood zone determinations from FEMA. Lastly, I want to bring up is that staff provided the FEMA appeal process document. The document provides a detailed analysis or procedures on how someone can file an appeal. Those procedures are on the table on the back, and those, they will be on our website. That gives the community a way to appeal. One of the things that's included in those criteria for appeals is that all appeals must be supported with scientific and technical data. Without that information, FEMA is going to, is going to regard those submissions as comments. And they could adopt them, or they could look at them, but they're not obligated to do any analysis on those comments if they're not supported with that. With that, staff's available for questions, and we have our consultant here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. What was the gentleman's name from Moffett and Nichols? Was it Greg?
It's Aaron Holloway.
Darren, okay.
Aaron.
Darren. Aaron, sorry, Aaron. Aaron is right here. He's coming up.
Good evening, Mayor.
You're probably going to get a couple of questions, and you might even get some from the public as we work through this here. We're going to go ahead with public comment. And Reg Brown, followed by Janelle Lane, followed by Marissa Coughlin.
Good evening, Mayor Peake, council members, city staff. I would like to caution the City of Malibu that the preliminary FEMA flood maps are inaccurate and excessively conservative in certain areas, such as the west end of Malibu Road and Broad Beach Road, where there are existing rock revetments. The properties there, where we just saw BFE of 31, are all behind rock revetments. You get away from the rock revetments, it drops down to 17. That tells me that the rock revetment, having the rock revetment in front of your property is detrimental as far as FEMA is concerned. This is because FEMA does not recognize those structures as certified structures, even though the City of Malibu and the Coastal Commission has approved them and permitted them. So I just want to caution the city on that. There's, I did go to the Moffett and Nichols presentation at the Ventura County Public Works, and I believe they stated at that point that there were some conclusions that were excessively conservative as well, particularly where a rock revetment is concerned. So it's my understanding that Moffett and Nichols is performing this review. I would just like to make sure that this review is available to the public on the city's website.
Thank you, Reg. Janelle? Followed by Marissa, followed by Paul. Actually, sorry, followed by Lloyd Ahern.
Good evening, Mayor Peake and council members. I just, I want to reiterate what Reg has said, and also just give you some food for thought. I've been with David Weiss for about 24 years now, and I do the majority of the coastal engineering in the office. And, you know, over the years, when we went to the Ventura County seminar, they did express, you know, that some of it is conservative, but they did also express that, hey, given the methodology, they've, they've done their homework, and you know, some of this is, some of the elevations are warranted. However, one of the, one of the things that I disagree with in the methodology, or it's not even the methodology, it's before that. They've taken all of the 1% of the, 1% of all the worst storms is, from what I understand, that was the information given to us in, at the County Ventura Seminar. And basically, that's like designing for the worst earthquake possible, right? We don't design for the worst earthquake possible. It's a fraction of 1% of the worst tides and the worst storm waves, heights of storm waves. You know, one of the, over the years, the 82, 83 storm, the 88 storms, and the 98 storms, the majority, there's probably less than a dozen homes that got destroyed or failed, not even destroyed, just failed. And basically, those were not because the waves came in and obliterated the homes, it was because the beach washed out, and the foundations, you know, not even collapsed, they sunk, or they dropped, right? The sand comes out, and the, now your piles are not founded. The new homes on concrete piles, you don't have to worry about, because those go down, say, 40 feet deep. That, they don't, they don't worry about that. They may get, you know, damaged. Things, debris gets thrown up, but you're not going to get a 31-foot wave that comes in. What that 31 feet is based on is the uprush. And the uprush is basically where the wave stops. The wave comes in, it breaks, it rolls up, and it hits a certain elevation. That elevation, at that point, the water is, the force is zero. There's no, the water goes, and then comes back down. You've all seen it, you all live on, you know, here in Malibu. So, you know, I just, it's food for thought. I just want you guys to think about this before we actually accept the flood maps at the elevations I give them. They need to, they need to, just do, we need to appeal it, and we need to be able to study what they, what they come up with, and then, you know, make some reasonable decisions on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Marissa, followed by Lloyd.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm not an engineer, so I won't address that. My concern has to do with our policies, our development policies, and also the history of the community. I've been through all the storms, having lived here 47 years, I've seen a lot of them. The current, the slide that Mr. DeBeau showed, actually, was where my house on Malibu Road, where I lived for 27 years, which is 14 feet above the street, existing construction as built, when, means that the new base flood elevation would have been on the top of my living room ceiling, which, and that's across the street from the sand. So I think there's inconsistencies. I have a concern, too, when the FEMA maps were put in in 64, the intent was, anyone that had a loan on a property, it was to offset a potential loss for the banks. That's how it started. Now, the maximums are $250,000 for structure, $50,000 for contents. There are some homes in Malibu that have $50,000 flat-screen TVs. Many of the homes don't have loans on them, so they don't have to buy insurance, and then the burden falls on the people that have to buy insurance, who are usually on the lower end of the investment scale in the properties. I also have a concern that there's inconsistencies of the requirement for redevelopment. The 50% threshold as Public Works is interpreting it through FEMA, about what you can build and what qualifies as reconstruction. There's discrepancies between our LCP and FEMA, and I think that should be, you know, looked at as well. I think that there should be an option to opt out if someone doesn't have to have insurance, and that they be allowed to, any damage at their own expense, that they be allowed to rebuild in their existing legal footprint, and not with any bootlegs, obviously, but in anything that was permitted, that they be allowed to construct it in the same place if they so choose, if they opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Lloyd, followed by Paul Gressani.
I handed this out tonight. I got this in the mail for my FEMA letter, saying what my new rate was going to be. Christie, when we did our LCP, we talked about if you lose your house, the Coastal Commission would allow you to build it back in the way, the footprint that you were on. Those meetings we had with Lloyd Zola, remember that, a long, long time ago. Right now, I don't know, we're in limbo here, with this elevation thing and everything changing. There's a whole new paradigm here, because that, the fact that we could build right on our own property if something happened with a, I'm not talking about a wave, I'm talking about a wildfire or an earthquake, okay? So that, I would love to hear your, your... Jefferson and Lou were here the night these guys were here. They are not ready for primetime. And now, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but they just didn't, at about 40% of the way through the meeting, they fell apart. And they don't quite have it together. And we're up against a November 6 date? It should be November 6, 2018. We really need to get these people as our advocate. We should get David Weiss and some people, and really, we should go to business on really what the real solution is here, because this stuff doesn't make sense. This grandfather idea in this thing here, is grandfather, one year? Five years? You know, there's so many questions to be asked. So I just hope we really get into this, because it's, it's not, it's beyond not fair, and it's, and they're, and they're not, they're not up to the task, especially with the fact that what they're up against with all these hurricane things. that what they're up against with all these hurricane things.
Thank you, Lloyd, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for once again addressing this situation. I, like Lloyd, was at the FEMA meeting and then I was at the last city council meeting and since then, thanks to Rob, I've looked at a better copy of the maps and the, the maps assume water is gonna behave in a way that's totally foreign to me, that we would have, we would have mounds of water that are 15 feet above the water on the adjacent properties. There's no, there's no effort that's been made to provide any kind of smooth transition from, from area to area and I'm still hoping that someone is able to explain to us all, especially me because I must be mentally deficient, why those, these mounds would occur. If you were at the base of a river that had tons of water flowing in at the same time there was a storm surge happening, maybe, but there isn't any, any source of water from onshore coming at those points. I haven't heard any kind of rational or semi-rational reason for why these mounds would occur on Malibu Road and Broad Beach. It just makes zero sense and I cannot urge you strongly enough to go ahead and file an appeal against them and fill in the blanks later and hopefully when Moffett, maybe, maybe Moffett's analysis will say these people are totally right, but somehow, I just don't think so. And I just can't believe that we're gonna, we're gonna adopt this and accept these numbers without challenging them because if you, if you go from, from sector to sector to sector, it really doesn't make any sense at all, especially in those two or three places where there's these huge differences. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. That concludes public comment. I know that some people had some questions. Jay, Lou?
Yeah, well, this only goes to prove that, you know, logic is the first casualty in government cuz there isn't a lot of logic in this and I don't quite understand 16 feet to 31 feet next door to each other. But my question is, will the Moffett and Nichols report, if it says, what we think it probably will say, be the basis for a city appeal to, by November 6?
Yes, yeah, based on their analysis and I will look at this and their recommendation will be appeal, comments or, or do nothing. So we'll, we'll let them do their analysis and then we'll see what their recommendation is.
In time to make it by November 6?
I understand that your outfit reviewed the FEMA maps for Ventura, correct?
Yeah, we did some work for the city of Dana Point and also for the county of Ventura. So we're very familiar with their methods and I can make some guesses about why you see changes on the map from 17 to 31 right next to a 16 and it has to do with, they apply different methods and different assumptions. So we're familiar with those, we just need to go in and investigate how they apply each of their methods and assumptions to each transect and we'll at least be able to explain why the numbers are what they are, whether we agree with them or don't agree with them and what would need to be done, what parameters would be changed to make it more realistic and uniform in a lot of cases.
Okay, I'm just curious, in Ventura or Dana Point, were the discrepancies on the same scale as we're looking at here in Malibu, the examples were provided?
In Dana Point, they, they weren't. In Dana Point, the main problem was that there was a lot of variation along a straight and uniform beach. So when you looked into the data, we were able to find data that defended a more uniform assessment of the hazards. We submitted that data and then FEMA took that data and they revised accordingly. In Ventura, it's a more recent effort and there's no indication that FEMA will accept our recommendations or our comments, but in Ventura, they had a lot of similar situations that you see along Malibu. A similar coastline with, you know, relatively steep coast, you know, headlands and narrow beaches and a lot of structures. And it's the structures and the assumptions and as you mentioned, Reg, the way they handled those structures leads to very high run-up elevations. And you can also make the argument that the run-up elevation isn't the correct representation of the hazard because as Lynn mentions, Jen, well, they're essentially mapping the splash elevation, not necessarily the.
Aaron, just to break it down into layman's terms of the splash elevation, essentially what you're saying is that if I had a rock wall or a sea wall or something there and the ocean hit that, that it's gonna splash higher than if it just had a beach that was gradually coming up and I had a bunch of sand?
Correct.
So as a result of that, I think it's just important for people out there that are listening to understand that where there's that structure or that rock, revetment or whatever the other structure is that's there, that causes the ocean, when a wave crashes, to splash higher as opposed to an old gradual white sand beach that's 100 feet deep where the wave can dissipate as it comes up. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. That helps me better understand the numbers that are there, although it's very hard to understand how one, how the, I guess the threshold of difference. I understand a three or four-foot difference property to property and maybe there is a 15-foot difference when there's a rock wall and a rock wall stops and then it goes to beach. But in what's referenced in the maps, some of the areas that I've had a chance to look at, you know, like what's referenced on Malibu Road here, it seems, you know, if you were to walk that beach for many of those areas, it would feel like that some of those structures are continuous and then not and then, you know, how, how some of those areas come, it just doesn't all add up. But we'll get there. So, thank you and I think also that the reason, maybe Christie can, is that, you know, for us to do this and receive this and essentially adopt these preliminary plans and to, is for us to provide, anyone that's coming to the building department to say that, look, there's a, there may be a scenario where this could be reality for this area and we have nothing better than to show you what the, you know, FEMA has provided us at this point. And, you know, yes, we're in the process of studying it, we may or may not appeal it, somebody from the public may appeal it, but this is what we have to work with now. And then knowing that that project probably wouldn't come forward to a council and, you know, people spend a lot of time planning on homes here and these kinds of things and engineering and whatnot, that it would be the right thing for us to do to provide that information to a property owner in the city so that they can make an educated decision on how they wanna proceed.
That's exactly right.
Very frustrating that the limbo that somebody could be left in where you could design a house and, you know, come back here in a year from now and by the time we have the maps completely official, there could be a 10-foot difference. And I think that that's where the frustration from the public is and that's obviously why the people from FEMA at the meeting couldn't deal with it because they were not prepared for that. And they needed to really make, I think, a full explanation to that to our city. So it's really a shame the things that have gone on in our nation and other parts due to the environment right now, you know, God willing, hopefully none of that stuff ever happens here at that level with a hurricane or some kind of ocean-related disaster coming on shore. So, Jay.
Thank you. In the Ventura assessments, was replenishment ever addressed?
No, it wasn't. And one of the big, I guess, omissions we've seen in the FEMA analysis is they didn't do a great job of handling natural and seasonal beach changes, beach changes during an extreme event. You know, as someone indicated, erosion's often a major concern in that, you know, during these big stormy seasons, you get a lot of beach loss and that's more catastrophic than flooding. And what we saw a lot in the FEMA analysis was they used a single data set, which is like a 2009, 2010 data set. Some, in some cases, it is a reasonable assumption for a winter profile, you know, there was a modest El Nino that year, but in other cases, it doesn't really capture the variation in the profile and the true hazard. So, no, they didn't, they didn't account for beach nourishment in the past or in the future and, yeah, that's one of the limitations of their study.
Can your assessment be in, mention that type of thing here along this part of our coast cuz if we were going to appeal it, certainly with Broad Beach or something like that, it's going to change while this is actually going on if the plan goes forward with whatever way that they replenish in front of Broad Beach.
Yeah, I mean, beach replenishment would change the hazard, it'd essentially change the method they use from, you know, looking at run-up on a sandy beach versus a rock revetment. So it would certainly result in a different number, but I'm not sure how FEMA would account for that. And one of the reasons why you see such high numbers is the assumptions they make for structures, they basically assume they don't exist or they assume they fail. And the assumptions for a failed structure are that it's very steep and very smooth, both of which are really not realistic. So that's why these numbers get so high.
Thanks. I'm also curious because there is no revetment on the western or northern side of the Adamson House in the lagoon, yet that came in with the 30-foot elevation, which I understand because it's low lying, but it does have a huge significant amount of sand on the inside of the lagoon near the PCH Bridge. And I hope that those kinds of things get mentioned so that our appeal has some scientific data with it because as I understand, when I read through it, an appeal had to be based on scientific data and that's why we hired your firm.
Right, and the validity of the appeal will be limited by the data available and, you know, we're not gonna be able to collect any data in the time allotted, so it's gonna be relying on whatever data sources are readily available or that the public has or the property owners have to defend their appeal.
Aaron, sorry, go ahead, Laura.
So, two questions. The first one is, I know that, you know, what you said earlier, we need to at least accept these so that people can know when they're building, but are we also voting whether to appeal or not?
No. You don't have any information about that yet, you're gonna, that's what.
Okay, so will that come back at our next meeting, though?
Yeah.
Because that's our only.
We have marching orders.
You do?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You gave them that.
We're clear as well. Okay, that I can remember and so as long as you have those orders to be able to do that, because we only have one other meeting until November 6. And then, I'm sorry, I don't remember the woman's name, but Janelle. So when you were talking about, do you plan for the worst earthquake possible, but I thought that's kind of what they're doing and I understand that, you know, with climate change, that our storms are going to be less often and more violent and that we're going to have higher, higher tides, higher king tides and so, I'm not an engineer, I don't really even understand half of this stuff, I mean, from an engineering or a whatever perspective, but, and I don't, and I, it does seem just from a laywoman's point of view that, you know, one house or one property is very different than, of the new elevations. But isn't that what this is all about, is that we are planning for, they are planning for climate change, so that of course the numbers are gonna be different than before or is the issue more that they seem to change from one house to the next to the next?
Yeah, they don't, FEMA does not account for any future effects of climate change or sea level rise.
It doesn't?
No.
Especially not under its new leadership.
Why? Is that just a politi, is, well, what, I'm sorry?
He thinks it's a hoax.
I know, well, that's true.
We did, we did ask them that night and they said that they, that had nothing at all to do with climate change, sea level rise or anything like that.
Well, gee, that, that really makes sense then. Yeah, now, now it really is even worse than before. Okay, all right, thank you.
Aaron, I just had one more question, it's sort of to help me understand sort of how they come to some of these numbers. If you were to take a beach where a wave breaks and a wave breaks further offshore, likely the wave uprush would be significantly less because the energy would dissipate further out at sea and when the wave comes to shore, the wave would be much smaller. Whereas if you had a deep water situation near the shore and the wave was like breaking hard right on the shore, you would have significantly higher wave uprush due to the amount of energy that's approaching the beach, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to.
And do we have that in Malibu?
You have all of the above.
I have one quick question also. So if we do an appeal, what we're doing, a lot of the homeowners are basically doing appeals just for their own particular property, right? Is that the concept?
They have that option.
They don't have the option, but I don't even think we have a lot of appeals that have happened.
They have the option, I don't know if people have done it or not.
All right, but we're appealing citywide, sort of, aren't we? If we do.
But we're not discussing that right now.
Right.
No, I'm just, it's just a question.
The basis for an appeal, if any, will come after the analysis, so we don't know. We, it appears that there are some problems with the numbers, that's what Moffett and Nichols is gonna tell us.
I think that what you're saying and how FEMA receives that is, then it's sort of on us to provide the science that refutes those numbers because they're not just gonna go out there and do all the science on their own, they're just gonna say if we make a strong enough case, then, okay, we'll revisit this.
Well, it says here that you have to do it by the science. It has to inform the appeal, so we would have to do that, we would have to show that.
Don't forget climate change is a hoax.
Can I add one thing to that, the suggestion from the comments in the public of that this mapping be put on our website so that we can share this information with the residents as best possibly that we can?
I think that, yeah, Jefferson, with the request from, from Reg and a couple of the people in the, the public was that the technical stuff related to these maps and even if we have any information on how they're generated and then the report that comes from Moffett and Nichols, if that can be posted online as, as quick as possible.
Well, that was part of what I was gonna suggest is a motion or add to the motion.
Well, if we need to add that to the motion, I think that that's just what we wanna have done. That's in the city's best interest or the public's best interest. All right, so I'm gonna make.
I'll make a, oh.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to make a motion to go forward with the recommended action.
Right, so staff's recommending. Right, so you've got your update, then we're gonna adopt Resolution 1744, which is gonna provide the notice to everybody so that nobody thinks we're hiding anything and then with your additional direction to move forward with Moffett and Nichols.
That's what I said.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Aaron, thank you for coming. Now at item 6A, which is school district separation ad hoc committee. Reva.
I don't have a whole lot more to add other than what's in the staff report. As you know, we're in the midst of discussing the separation of the school board and I think it would be important to have an ad hoc committee comprised of two council members who can discuss different issues as they come up with this matter.
I would make a motion to create an ad hoc committee and put Laura Rosenthal and Rick Mullen on it.
I would second that.
You don't wanna do this, Skylar, you've already been involved in it.
I am happy to do it, I just thought that Rick would be a better person to do it because in the event that he runs for another term and this kind of stuff is still going on, then we have somebody on there that's gonna be in there for the long haul. That's my only reason for doing that.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine with me, I just was, because I guess that's okay even though you were in a preliminary meeting, is that okay, Brown at Wisey?
Yes.
Okay, then that's fine with me.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then I guess Laura.
We're gonna, we're gonna say that Councilwoman Rosenthal seconded that.
Yeah. I just wanted, Laura, and I just wanted to add in there that I would, just if you could just download with Rick, you know, sort of, and Craig, the stuff that happened at that meeting. So, Aaron, with Reva, so, thank you. Right, we're now at 7A, which is whether or not the city should ban the sale of plastic water bottles and straws within the city and looks like we have a couple of public speakers.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quick staff report from Ms. Abzak.
Good evening, Mayor Peake and members of the city council. I'm here today to comment on the report that Mayor Peake had me prepare relating to the city's authority to ban plastic bottles and plastic straws. I don't need to educate the council about the destructive effect of plastic on the environment. The council's already passed an ordinance that bans the use of polystyrene and single-use plastic bags. I just wanted to give you a quick update about a development in the law since I wrote the report, which is that Seattle, Washington has also banned the use of plastic straws. It's going to go into effect in July 2018 and it's a part of a broader ordinance that banned the use of plastic foodware, disposable plastic foodware. There was initially an exemption for plastic straws and cutlery because there were not good alternatives and also recycling plants weren't able to deal with them. Since then, the ordinance was initially passed in 2012, so since then, they have provided, they've lifted the exemption. so since then, they have provided, they've lifted the exemption on plastic straws and cutlery, and so it will be banned in July of next year. So, then, the purpose of this report with, just to give the City Council the opportunity to decide how it wants to move forward and handle the item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a couple of public speakers. Jessica Bork. Jessica, you're followed by Irma Bishop, then Ryan Embry, then Mary Ann Riggins.
Thank you, Mayor Peak, council members, city staff. I sent in a letter this afternoon from the American Beverage Association, so I thought I would just read from it today for the public record. So, on behalf of the American Beverage Association, I wrote with some concerns contained in the staff report dealing with single-use bottles, that's before you today. I understand the discussion on a plastic bottle ban is just in the beginning stages, and so I think our primary concern right now is just to seek some clarity, whether you were looking at something citywide, or just on city property. Is it bottled water or all plastic bottles? So that's some of the clarity we're looking for at this point. And retailers across the state and across the city offer a multitude of beverages in plastic containers. The packaging that surrounds beverage products must be strong, reliable, and safe. It must also be consumer and user-friendly. And we completely understand the desire to reduce plastic waste, and are fully committed to being part of that solution. However, we also feel that a ban will not solve the problem, and a more effective approach would be to educate consumers about recycling and continuing to innovate. Our beverage companies take environmental stewardship seriously, so in addition to boosting recycling programs, they have devoted and continue to devote resources to reduce the raw materials used in PET plastic packaging through light weighting, redesign, and use of post-consumer recycled materials. The PET bottles used by ABA's member companies are also 100% recyclable, and I think some people don't know this, but everything from the bottle to the cap to the label around the bottles are recyclable. And so, while we know, while we understand you haven't decided which direction you'd like to take yet, we do hope that you consider the ABA a resource as you move forward and keep us as part of the discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you. Irma?
Good evening, Mayor Peak and council members. I represent the International Bottle Water Association and the California Bottle Water Association. And I guess, starting off first, I guess I'd like to get a little bit more clarity if this is for all bottled products or just bottled water in general. You know, we, I guess, as you're, we're looking to propose a ban on this. We oppose any proposal in this. Efforts to ban or restrict access to bottled water hinders individuals searching for healthier beverage alternatives. Bottled water has one of the lowest environmental footprints of any packaged beverage. You know, if indeed, unless we have confirmation of what it's targeting, if it is bottled water only, it unfairly targets one food product, even though thousands of other PET plastics contain plastics. Bottled water is also strictly regulated by the FDA as a food product, making it a safe choice for consumers. Again, we, I guess we ask for a little bit more clarity on this. The one thing that we do want to say is that, on behalf of the Bottle Water Association, is that during natural disasters, as earthquakes, hurricanes, like we've seen in the last couple of weeks, bottled water is one of the things that comes to mind, first and foremost, when public water supplies do not provide safe drinking water to, to the citizens. So, you know, we, we ask that you take that into consideration when proceeding with this. Thank you.
Oh, joy. Thank you. Ryan, followed by Mary Ann.
First of all, the city of Malibu has curbside recycling as part of its environmental program, and so hopefully, plastic bottles are being recycled, as well as return for deposit at the, I guess the one place, it's two places that are doing that. I bring it up to say that this is a good way to address the bottles, but there's a lot of other recycling, including glass and aluminum cans, which is not occurring, because the Malibu Country Market Shopping Center, when it was remodeled, was, had to design and approve 300-square-foot area to restore the recycling center that used to exist at that location, and it was never fulfilled. And they may be taking some things back in the store for credit, but that's not accepting, I mean, it's not, the volume of recycling is not occurring there. And the volume overwhelmed the Ralph's Market, reversed vending machines outside, and they were constantly going out of whack, too much sand getting in them. And so, that's another area that I think would give much greater returns than this. But I want to speak to this. Solid plastic straws, I think, are fair game. I think the water bottles and stuff got kind of thrown into the mix tonight. What I would like to say is that we might, maybe Skylar won't remember, but there were, there were plastic-coated straws, or wax-coated straws, and Laura's nodding, yeah, okay, I remember those. If you chewed on them long enough, they disintegrate. But those are obvious alternatives. And I don't know if plastic coating is acceptable as a greatly reduced measure of pollution, but I think it's quickly implementable as an alternative, and it may be the right step in getting where you want to go. I think if you're gonna address bottles, you should probably cut that as a separate item, because that's gonna require a lot more study, and just stick with straws. Maybe Christie can tell you. You can do the straws tonight, maybe, because you talked about that before. And I think there is already a practical alternative. The bottle thing is a huge discussion. Since you're talking about it tonight, I'll say, let's concentrate only on those bottles that are eight ounces or less. Those are the ones that are less likely to be recycled. I think their reports and evidence will show that. Small, little bottles just don't make it back to the stores or the redemption facilities, and they get lost in the regular trash. The woman from the ABA is here tonight. You should use her as a resource. You should quiz her. What have other cities and local jurisdictions done to achieve what you're trying to get at?
Thank you, Ryan. Mary Ann?
Hello, Mayor Peak and council members. I just want to say I'm in favor of this. I think it's a great thing for Malibu to get out there in front. Looking at alternatives for other plastic straws would be great for our environment. I would like to see us move forward with requiring, or encouraging, bottle filling stations, not only in our own facilities, but also other commercial areas, state parks, county parks, for people to have the option of filling their, or getting their water needs from some other thing than a single bottle. Look forward to seeing where this goes, and thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, does anybody have any questions, or should I? Go ahead.
Just wanted to remind you, I'm sorry, just wanted to remind you of- That we're not adopting anything tonight. We're just looking for a direction on whether or not you want us to prepare something.
Laura?
If we do take these two pieces apart, the straws and the bottles, I strongly support the straw issue. It's obvious it's a problem from reading through all of the research and looking at what the other cities have done. I do remember, I think probably four out of five of us on here would remember the paper straws.
What are you trying to say, Laura?
I was excluding myself, of course, including you, Skylar. And I, you know, I know that they talk about this a little bit in there, and I, I'm sure, I know that you can still get them. I don't know the impact on it, but I think that the more we can do, I know some of the municipalities excluded fast food, and they had different exclusions. I would like to include fast food. I mean, we have three, basically three fast food areas, places here, but I just think that it's a really good place to start. I will wait to hear what other people have to say about the, the water bottles. I do absolutely support the recommendation in here to increase the availability of water refilling stations to, at all of our, you know, at the schools, at whatever place that we can help, at the parks. Do we still, and I know Jesse's not here, but do we still have the vending, I think we still have the vending machine at Bluffs Park?
I believe so, and we're in the process of adding water bottle filling stations there. And then, as part of next year's budget, we have a proposal that we were gonna bring forward to council to put them at all of the parks.
All of the parks.
Due to the cost, we weren't able to do them all in what we had for this year's budget.
And we could also look at, you know, getting some more grants from West Basin.
And we're doing that, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Since we're all on the exploration point of this Item 7A, can we also put into that some area that we could designate as a recycling area? I ran on this when I went for reelection back in November, that we would eventually find a place to do some recycling of the plastics, because we do recycle batteries, and we do a pretty good job with the electronic recycling. If you ever go behind the library and you go to those, you can actually see a lot of residents doing their best. But without the Ralph's recycling for Central Malibu, it's, it's kind of like, where do we go? Where do we do that? I mean, you can put it in your own can, but if you're not a resident here, you're gonna have to go search a can out to do your recycling. And I'd like to provide something in the way of research for a place to designate for the recycling to continue, because it used to be very convenient at Ralph's until it was over-impacted with too many people using it. And that's why the chain took the plant out. So if I could add that in there, just a place to research it, so that we can consider that in the future.
Jane, Laura? I mean, Lou.
Thank you. One of us. As I search my memory back, I do remember the time when we all had paper straws, and they seemed to work just fine. So I would definitely support the straw part of this. I have a little more question about the, the plastic water bottles. Personally, I think the only thing healthy comes out of plastic bottles is water. Yeah, so, but that's only a personal opinion.
I don't think that the intention was for it to only be plastic water bottles, per se. It should be plastic beverage containers that are of a certain size and lower, period.
All right, well, I think that's a bigger lift, I really do. And that probably requires a lot more evidence and, and, you know, study. I do think the sourcing is something that we should definitely go right on, because I think that makes a tremendous amount of sense.
Jane, just to be, to be clear, the straws are made of plastic and polystyrene. I heard that someone was trying to tell me that some of the straws are actually made of a polystyrene-based plastic.
True. Straws are generally either made of polystyrene, or they're made of the polypropylene.
Okay, so technically, right now, any polystyrene straw that's being used at any of the fast-food restaurants is illegal, and they should receive a notice in the mail tomorrow, because that's already banned? Because they're not allowed to use polystyrene products for food. Is that correct? Craig?
I'll have Craig answer.
That is correct. As far as our polystyrene ban and all the things, it did mention straws in there, so extruded polystyrene straws are banned.
Okay, so have we notified the fast-food restaurants that operate in the city, and all of the restaurants that they're not allowed to use those?
Sorry, we're currently working on a lot of outreach programs, from plastic bags to polystyrene. We're working with a number of industries. So we're in the process of reaching out. It's a, it's a cultural shift, takes some time to do, but we've been in contact with McDonald's, and a number of the corporate offices have responded to us. So, we've had some good success. We'll continue to work on that, but it's a lot of work to get out to everybody.
Was it, Jessica, were you from the American Beverage Association? Who, you could come up to the mic for a second. You guys represent, like Coca-Cola, or?
Sure. In California, our primary members are Coca-Cola, Pepsi, and Dr. Pepper Snapple Group.
Okay, so in California, Coca-Cola, Pepsi, and Snapple, they all offer products that are in cans and glass. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so then it wouldn't be a problem for them to offer those and not to offer the plastic ones of the smaller size? Because they're already readily available in aluminum and glass.
Well, like I mentioned, I think it's, it's about providing consumer choice and, and keeping them-
Well, the citizens in our community, their consumer choice is to not be polluting the ocean. And unfortunately, the amount of plastic that's in our ocean, we're a very large city that is on the ocean, is unacceptable. So that's where most of this comes from, is from actually the residents of our community that are super concerned. And I think that the Coca-Colas and those of this world are very good stewards of the world, and recognize that having glass and the aluminum alternatives are very good things. Maybe going back to the old days, I guess, is a little bit of a shift there.
Sure, yeah. No one wants to see those, that kind of packaging.
And I just wanted to be clear, you guys don't, do you receive any money from the American Chemistry Council?
I don't know.
You don't know?
No.
Okay.
It's not something I know.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to make a comment, and it's just a plug for, on November 29th, we are going to have a presentation for our library speaker series from Marcus Erickson, and he does, he's a scientist, and he does a lot of work in this area. He actually has this whole floating plastic barge boat thing. So I just wanted to say that for anyone in the audience, and for anyone watching, it's gonna be a great speaker series and a presentation, and it's very relevant to everything we're talking about tonight.
Okay, so I'm gonna kind of make a recommendation that we sort of take this in two tiers based on, oh, sorry, right.
Can I make some comments? Thank you. I wanted to thank both speakers from the people who sell things with bottles for submitting the letters, and for bringing out some excellent points, and for offering to be a part of the discussion, because I think it's, it's important for you, obviously, and I'm guessing you've probably dealt with this in other towns and so forth. So, hopefully the city will work with these organizations in whatever fashion, so that as we move forward and with these changes, they can benefit. And, you know, you brought up some great points. Why water? You know, I'm just glad to hear you say it's not just water, okay? Because you make a really good point. If there's no water, people are gonna drink probably stuff that's not as good for them as water. And most of the things in plastic bottles are probably not as good as water. So those are good points. I'm glad to see that you're, it's not just gonna be on, on water, and that it'll be a deliberate process. So I just wanted to thank the two of you for coming, and I hope they get included in discussion as we go forward.
All right, so with that, thank you, Rick. I think it's, it's wise for, at this point, to sort of make a distinction, because I think that the straw is something, that's something that we can deal with in a much more timely fashion. So what I would propose is that we come back with an ordinance banning plastic straws specifically, and also recognizing the fact that the polystyrene straws are already banned. And that that come before, in the beginning of the year, with an implementation point of the summer of 2018. So like, June 1st, or something like that. As far as the straw goes, is everyone, is there consensus on that?
No.
Okay, then the second part of it would be the plastic bottles. And I think that what we should do is, we should have staff do more research, look at the size of containers. I think that if we were to look at it as some sort of an ounce, maybe it's a 20-ounce or a larger ounce thing, because I don't think that you can go to the market and buy a one-liter jug of soda, but you could go to there and buy a larger plastic bottle, which those often do get recycled. The larger plastic things, I think the things that we have harder time with, or even, you know, the reference, much thinner plastic bottles that we use now, that's great, but then that's something that breaks apart in the environment more, goes, you know, quicker down to these smaller particles that never leave our environment, that harm, Laura?
No, I was-
And then, you know, it's probably somewhere between a 16- and a 24-ounce container, where we recommend that we are not gonna be selling those containers in the city at all. There's glass, there's aluminum, there's paper. It's all readily available. Some manufacturers don't offer it, but they will adapt. And I think that that's, that's a decision as, as we move forward in our culture, that people are becoming more aware. As far as what, the water filling stations, I think we're, are we in consensus on that, that we would like to see those? You know, and Reva, if there's a, a way to allocate things in the budget for next year, if they're sooner, we can get that done sooner. That's something I think that we're all in support of. of, of doing. It doesn't seem like it's a, you know, million-dollar expense to get that done.
We'll add it in the mid-year budget amendment and move forward with that. And I did also want to add that this fiscal year, we did increase the number of trashcans along Pacific Coast Highway at all of our bus stops, you may have noticed, and those do have a recycling area. Before, we just had regular trashcans, so we have increased those, and our goal is to replace all of the trashcans next to bus stops with those, that option.
And, so if we can bring back an item that's about the specific, the plastic bottles, and then Jefferson, you know, you, in referencing the recycling, you know, is there a piece of city property that we could put in a permanent recycling facility? I don't know if that's something that we've looked at, maybe?
We could research that.
Yeah.
It's what we asked Riva to look for, is that could just be mentioned in the report in a paragraph or two, that we're looking forward to that, as a community, because there are people that come here from out of the community that bring plastic with them, and not just purchase it here, but those people must have access to some kind of recycling if they choose to do so, rather than a trashcan on the side of the highway. So I think Riva got it, and she'll look, but we can add that into that, just, it's just a paragraph or two. Thank you.
Laura?
Two questions. So if we allow glass or boxes or whatever, why do we think, and maybe, because I didn't read it in here, why do we think that people wouldn't be polluting with a glass bottle?
Well, a glass bottle goes to the bay of, in the ocean, and returns to sand.
Okay, but what about, and the paper would obviously break down too, but it has the coating on it.
And so would the aluminum.
Right, the issue isn't not recycling, the issue is that the plastic just break, doesn't go away.
Will never break down. Okay, okay. And then, are we allowed to require, let's say, you know, tell, let's say, other governmental, like the state parks or the county beaches, or can we require that they have working water fountains with refillable stations there?
I'm sure we could offer to help contribute funds to implement them, and that they would probably be receptive to that.
Right, but I just, I didn't know if we could require them on property that is owned by another governmental agency in the city.
I can follow up with the entities and see what the issues are, and if it's something that we can solve, I'll certainly figure out a way to do that.
I know that the, the school district has been trying to get, especially at Malibu High, had come to the city and asked for financial help with the water fountains, and trying to get, though we did encourage them to apply for grants for the water filling station from West Basin, and they never went forward with that, so.
Marian, can you come up to the microphone real quick?
Did you come from a site council, or?
From the BB Oversight Committee.
Oh, okay.
Or ES, no. So they do want to move forward, and on October 19th, they'll be having a school board meeting to discuss implementation of adding bottle filling stations to campuses throughout the district. Most of the breakdown on that has been whether filtered or non-filtered.
Right.
Sort of things. But they are trying to move forward in implementing adding bottle filling stations, and some of the campuses already do have some bottle filling stations installed.
So my encouragement, and I know site council just met a couple of weeks ago, but, you know, it's, West Basin has a program that you can get, you know, a lot of it paid for, and I know that they're still doing it, so I would, I don't know how to get through, like, to the, I know we tried to get Malibu High to do it, but they never did, so, we can try again?
So Marian said that they do have one on campus, and they're going to get operational ones hopefully in the next few years, and it would be?
No, a few weeks.
Weeks? Okay. So we don't need to be directing a letter to them to implement that anytime soon? Okay. The one thing that I would recommend, and I think we should make a recommendation to the state and national parks and the MRCA, is that at the trail areas, the base of the trails, Whining Way, the area near Malibu Seafood, and the other busy areas, we should be recommending and offering, you know, maybe a nominal amount of funding towards contributing to them putting the filling stations in those areas.
They even have water there, though? They don't have any water? How about, it took a really long time just to get them to put a bigger garbage can, but maybe if we could help them with putting recycling there, at least that would help.
I think that those things are all along these lines, and I think that there's a uniform commitment amongst this council to get that done. Correct? Okay, all right. Do we already have enough direction on that? Okay, good. We're now at 7B, which is offshore oil and gas drilling, fracking, and well stimulation. Laura?
I love the title, but, yes, stimulation, well-stimulation, but I was just approached about this, and I think, given the current state of, or the directions coming from the federal government to look at and explore doing these things in California waters, I think it's very important for our city to take a stand and say that we are not in favor of this, and that's why I brought this to council.
And we'll never be in favor of this.
Right, and so I will like to make a motion to, to send a letter from the, or is it a resolution or a letter? I guess we would be asking for, yeah, a resolution of the City of Malibu supporting renewal of the moratorium and federal legislation to provide, to provide long-term protection from offshore oil drilling.
Can we have a little discussion first?
Yeah, go ahead.
You said somebody approached you, can you elaborate a little more on that?
It was the organization, sorry, I thought it was in here, but it's not. It's an organization that is against offshore drilling, it's part of California, it's a nonprofit, and they are contacting cities and organizations up and down the state. I'm sorry, I don't have the.
That's okay. So they are under the impression that there's like a threat, that there might be more offshore drilling in California?
Yes, because the, the new administration actually, and I can't remember if it came from the president himself or from the interior secretary, they did put out something saying that they were going to be exploring the California coast, and that they're, that the state waters only go out so far, and then the rest is federal, and that they were going, three miles is state, and that they were going to be exploring and studying, and that their goal was to be able to look for offshore drilling. And I think that not only would that be an environmental disaster, but I think it's also a security risk, as we all discussed when we were fighting the LNG. And I also believe that, I say kind of in some ways, there's something kind of primordial about being able to look out into the horizon and just see the horizon, and not see oil derricks, and not see, you know, anything out there except for the passing ship or an island, and I think that that's another important reason to be against this.
Well, like all things that come before the city council, I did a little investigating on this, and did a little digging into the history of offshore oil drilling, so I'll share what I found. Do you know where the first offshore oil rig in the world was?
Summerlin.
Summerlin, right in California.
Yep.
And it was actually a, wasn't a true offshore rig, it was like a thing that they built out to then drill offshore. So that's interesting. And one of the other things I looked at is, and I'm not an oil and gas expert at all, but I learned a few things. There's an outfit called Baker Hughes that does a rig count for, all over the world, and they do it, they update it every week. And I looked at a spreadsheet for, since the year 2000, and in the state of California, since the year 2000, there's, it changes as to how many rigs are actually pumping. The maximum I ever saw was seven, and that was only for a couple of years. Mostly, it's been zero, one, two, maybe three. Nineteen, 2005, I think they had up to five, but that was very unusual. I think the rig count in California at present time of rigs that are operating, and actually has been for a few years, is zero. And I believe, from the research that I've done, that the, probably the reason for that is that offshore oil exploration is expensive, and there's lots of cheaper ways to get oil all over the United States. And over the last 10 years, the United States has, is relatively awash in oil with new technologies that are coming on. In fact, we've, I think we've changed our policy, we're now an oil exporting country. So I just throw that out there, that the reason there's no offshore oil drilling in California is it's too expensive, and if you're an oil company and you've got, you know, North Dakota, or Texas, or any of the other states where you're going to have a, you know, more receptive political and environmental climate to go for oil exploration, I think the threat, the imminent threat to offshore oil drilling in the state of California at present time is very low, due to the low price of oil and the overabundance of oil. I think the United States now is on par with Russia and Saudi Arabia as the largest producers of oil in the world. So I think the threat is almost nonexistent, despite what rhetoric might be coming from the public. So I just feel that this is something that's kind of a feel-good thing, but it's not really in our purview, and that's my commentary on the threat of offshore oil rig drilling in the state of California. Thank you.
Well, you would think that it would make sense, that everything you're saying would make sense, except for, this is not coming from the public, this threat, this is coming from the federal government. And so that's why it's necessary to do this, because they are the ones that brought this up and said, we are specifically looking at California. And in fact, I know that the government, the governor and the state legislature has also looked at this, and I, the one thing that I will disagree with you on is that I think it is very pertinent to Malibu, because I don't think anyone in Malibu, we fought very hard against the LNG, and I don't think anyone in Malibu wants, you know, to see this on our coast, or to have to worry about any environmental disaster. But I do agree that it doesn't make sense, but many things that come out of our federal government now don't make any sense either, as we discussed earlier with the FEMA maps.
And I remember the LNG thing, and I went to all the LNG presentations by the Australian company that wanted to sell natural gas to the United States. And the thing that was always missing in there is, is there a need for natural gas, to import natural gas from Australia and the United States? And there isn't a need. In fact, the United States has so much natural gas now that they've shut down most of their wells, because the price is too cheap. So the law of supply and demand, I would say, is on our side on this, and the threat to offshore oil drilling, despite, as I said, despite rhetoric that may be coming from Washington, because it's the oil companies that have to put up the money and take the political risk, and deal with the environmental hassles, and, and deal with the, a state that's probably not going to give them a warm welcome, as other states, when there's plenty of other opportunities. I think the threat is minimal, and so since you brought this up, I did a little research, and that's my commentary. Thank you.
Rick, I also sort of want to add that, in response to knowing that the Summerlin oil field lies directly in the view of a house that my family has in Santa Barbara, that, let's not forget the fact that the modern-day environmental movement also started in Santa Barbara in response to the very oil that you're referencing. And God forbid, the regime at hold right now opens up our ocean waters that are outside three miles to oil, to natural gas, to any of the reference drilling that's in what Laura has here. I believe that if there was ever an environmental disaster related to that, that we would all be regretting any decision we made that was not opposing that. And I think it's, it's very important for us, when we know that these things are going on, and we know that countless other cities up and on the coastline are currently opposing and passing measures, measures to do so, and proclamations along these lines, that we stand together with them, and we say that we don't want this here, that enough is enough, it's already happened once. We had another oil spill on a pipeline that was on land recently in Santa Barbara in the last few years, and we don't want that anymore. Our country, we're trying to lessen our reliance on petrochemicals and oil. We're not trying to increase it, and I understand the reason for becoming, you know, energy-independent and producing here at home, and not having the national security a threat with associated in having oil in many parts of the world, that you spend a lot more time than any of us. But I think it's very clear from the community in our city that that's not something that people want, as was very much evidenced when there was a terminal proposed 11 miles offshore at the far northwest end of our community, really out in front of more, you know, Point Magoo, Oxonard area. So based on that history, I would have to support this.
Yeah, I'm not, I just said, as a commentary, I think that the threat of more offshore oil drilling in California is relatively minimal. That's my commentary. It's, you can pass this, that's fine.
I hope that you're right.
I don't think that the, you know, you said, open up the coastline of California, the coastline of California is open up. In fact, the oil rigs are right offshore, and they do have the authority to use those, and they don't use them because it's not economically viable. So that's my commentary. Would you like to comment, Lou, or can I comment?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So I've done a lot of research on this, too. The wells out there all the way up to H, which is the furthest or most western well that the different oil companies own and operate, have not begun the practice of spidering yet on a number of the well sites, because, as you mentioned, Rick, the profitability of oil isn't great enough to support the spider extensions, which do go down and then expand out to.
Directional drilling.
Well, the industry calls it spider, but directional is another term. So that possibility is still out there, as well as with the fracking materials and the solutions that are used to help expand the rock, to get the derivatives out. The residuals from those are the big concern for most of the environmental people that are aware of it. You have benzene and a couple of other very toxic solutions that are left as a residual after the fracking continues. So if I may add to this as well, that awareness be brought about of what you do with the residual materials. And there's a company up in Reno, Nevada called Digital Solid State Propulsion, which has a solution for curing the benzene left behind, and we need to educate, because as we become more renewable, and we depend on more renewable, we also have to have an answer for what we've left behind as a society. So along with this, if I may add to that, that the derivatives left behind have to be addressed as well, because that's the real pollution factor here, is those derivatives. And in your, you know, in your research, Rick, you probably ran across that kind of material, and it was described in detail, but there are companies out there now that are addressing these residuals, and I'd like the public to get to know that there are things out there. Now Baker Hughes is a big company, and it's, it's a monster, and they also do filters, and that's part of their program for their operations, too, along with Continental, which is another company that also provides these services. So I think we should look at this. John Seibert is a board member of DSSP, and he's been looking at this. Former council member Seibert has a great scientific knowledge in how to deal with the residuals of this, but I think the spidering should be addressed, as well as the residuals of the fracking. Thanks.
Jefferson, I don't know how to be, just to be clear on that, I mean, I think that the language that's spelled out here, that what you would like to add is that you're also opposed to spidering and directional drilling and the chemicals that are left behind?
I'd like to add that, and then that way, we can also address the future with the derivatives, and how to get rid of the derivatives from older wells, because those are pollutants that are far in the future, that are going to become part of our water tables. But if the general public isn't educated, I think this is an educational piece here. 7B is about educating, and I'd like to include something like that, if it's not too late, or can we come back and?
Well, I don't think that anybody up here wants our ocean to turn into a superfund site any more than. any more than it already has.
Okay, well, I like to educate people, like Rick went out, he educated himself, and I've done the same, so I'd like to invite people to educate themselves so that they have a future.
Can I say something? Basically, it just seems to me that you, I completely agree that we went from an oil importing country to an oil exporting country, and, but there's no reason to say that it's not going to turn around again, everything changes and there's evolution all the way around. The one thing that I like about this is the first line, which is, we're calling on the federal government to protect our coast, that's really what it's all about for me, and I support this.
Well, I think that's what I was going to say, that this is really to add Malibu's name with other municipalities and counties and cities and whatever, to have a united voice to say that we do not want these in our waters, so I, I understand the educational part, but I don't think the place for this is about the, the, you know, getting rid of the chemicals that come out of fracking or gas drilling or anything like that, we can certainly do something else for that, but I think this resolution is to add to the other voices saying we want to protect our coast.
All right, so I'm going to second Laura's motion, are there all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we're going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of the 58 people that lost their lives in Las Vegas, and also for Tom Petty.
Thank you.
And Rick, did you want to add somebody?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I would like to also add to that William Clark, longtime resident of Ramirez Canyon, who recently passed away, and he's lived there for a long time, he's been a pillar of the community, and I know that his, he would miss by the community, by his neighbors as well as his family members. Okay, I'm good with that, too.
You're good.